We all had a chance to read those minutes for April 9th. I don't think we have a court in order to approve that, do we?
No, we don't.
You can't vote.
Right.
So you can't make the motion, so we're gonna have to...
We'll have to table that until the next meeting. Okay, our first item is discussion approval of application according to request to install a storage shed for property located at 601 South Cherry Street.
I don't know if I need to make a...
Go ahead.
I think since item six is... refers to residential appearance standards. Now, that's item seven. I think we need to move item four down below item seven.
So, that doesn't require a motion or anything like that?
Doesn't.
It's just a change in the...
The order.
The agenda is red. So, I think that the... am I correct? You want to move item seven to the first discussion topic? Discussion and action topic?
That would be fine.
Okay.
And the reason that many of you are here about that is we're gonna be discussing on item seven, an amendment to our residential appearance standards regarding outbuildings, and that has to be one of these.
And this was an item that was... we were gonna be discussing before this item was brought to us. Okay, so that's why we wanted to move that down.
So, we move on to item five, discussion and approval of application 201-5-2011-2947 regarding a request to allow rebuilt automobiles to be sold for the property located at 3510 South Division Street. Could we have a report from staff, please?
Yes, so let me get there. Basically, application that we're looking at tonight, seeking a statement from the City of Guthrie to be issued to the State of Oklahoma with specific wording that is not noted in our zoning ordinance. The key here is that the state, in order to approve an application, requires a letter with the word "rebuilt" automotives in it, and that is not in our zoning ordinance, and so a recommendation would have to be made to the City Council for that letter to be issued.
What next? Commissioners?
I guess I need to... someone needs to explain to me what rebuilt means.
Joe, I'd like to help you with that.
As opposed to...
If you'll join us over the...
What do you want?
A typical used car.
If we could get you to introduce yourself, please.
Will Hill. In Iowa, I'm Bill, a lot of sales, been on South Division for about four years now. Nothing's changed. I've always been there and done that, just knew, basically, it's where my building's all going down to. They want it insured at the same place. I use my rebuild license on Roller Coaster Road where I repair the cars, okay? But they want to have the same liability from the same location, so that's why we are working that way. And they've been this way for a long time, just... they show me letters from the City of Guthrie from four, five other people in Guthrie having the same letter, but they just went right on it for rebuilt.
So, basically, what you're doing really different than other car lots is you're rebuilding cars somewhere else than in...
Right, I'm moving there.
Okay.
And, but they want the liability license to come from that place, and I sell them out there. I might say, dealer's license.
You're saying they being the state?
Yes, used car commission. And it's just a new technicality they put in on their way words, and their lawyers keep the backside, has to say rebuilt on it, on that letterhead from you guys, saying there's no permits, no licensing, nothing special, y'all being on it, basically what they're worried about. Don't worry about it, you need a permit or something for it from the city. And we just don't issue anything according... and I'll just tell you, I don't know what has been done. I've been in this role, serving as the community and economic development director, and so as the economic development director since November of last year. I can attest for what's been done in the past. I can tell you that we do not have the specific phrase that the state is requiring the word "rebuilt" in our zoning ordinance, and so going outside of that ordinance would require special consideration by both the planning commission and a recommendation to the City Council. That's why we're here tonight. Do you understand what we're meaning? What basically is, is wrecked cars have been repaired, just like yours, that it turns into rebuilt, and stuff, and the state's been changing all of them, because there's no record on everyone ago. You can put a rebuilt motor, it's gonna say rebuilt too, okay? It's just like the public bills and recommendations.
Yeah, well, you know, we used to go to used cars on the...
Yeah, kind of. Then they went to remanufactured cars, and just, you know, they got five different kinds of titles now, that's what it's for.
But the cars aren't gonna be rebuilt there?
There's not even... I have a little... that's why there's pictures. I have a little portable building there that I keep law boards and that kind of stuff. There's not even a shop there or nothing else in there.
Can you tell me... I think that maybe someone had a concern about this in our department. Can you tell me the address of where you're rebuilding the cars? Is that in town?
No, it's out in Cali, Roller Coaster Road.
Okay, okay.
Right behind John F. Thorpe's there.
Okay.
I already got a couple of questions. One for you, Cody. What does the zoning ordinance 2422 say at this time? Doesn't say rebuilt, is that it?
It says used and new auto sales. It does not specifically say rebuilt. It is... that's kind of why this process has been so slow, because the state's requiring us to issue a letter to them for their approval, for this applicant's approval, of something that we just don't have it on our books that we can't approve.
So, we will have to make that change in our ordinance too, I guess?
We can treat this as a case-by-case basis, so that you are aware of whenever these applicants are coming, or we can look to make a recommendation to amend ordinance 2422 whenever that specific item is on a future agenda. You do not have that wording on your discussion and possible action tonight, and so we cannot rearrange or reword ordinance 2422 tonight, but you can issue an approval recommendation to the City Council for the letter to be issued to the state with the word "rebuilt" included.
Okay. My other question for extra, though, is who is Amanda Bergerson?
It's Lafayette.
Okay, and my question is, who knows that the applicant does not plan to perform auto repairs on site? I wondered why that was down on there and what the role she plays.
She sells these car lots. She sells cars.
Okay, because you're the applicant.
Right.
And so, if any auto repairer comes and say, "We have to find her," is that it?
That'd work too.
No, I just wondered that.
Yeah.
And do we have any feedback, Mr. Cody, on any of the 11 property owners or contract?
Shelby Lewis in our office sent out the 11 notification letters. We received no feedback. And landlords here today too?
No, I actually did receive a call from a resident that lived close to there, and their only concern was that it wouldn't be salvage.
Right.
And of course, I didn't know what rebuilt meant.
That's why I put that in application, because when I was talking to you and I was talking to Shelby, the word salvage kept coming into play, and so I wanted you guys to know specifically that stuff isn't gonna be done there. There's not gonna be wrecked cars on property. It's not gonna be some big ugly eyesore. Nothing's gonna change. It's gonna continue being the way it is. And so that's why I specified on the application that no work will be done there. We just need to be able to legally sell rebuilt cars there.
Are you a landowner?
Yes.
I'm not sure... Chairman, I'm not sure I need to make the motion, but I would... it sounded... everything sounded fine with what we have... thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions for... I would just, perhaps suggest that we note the fact that there... that we can go ahead and do this, but with the provision that obviously there would be no auto repairing down there, or that this is never, ever going to be a salvage yard.
Correct.
Well, would they have to... Cody, would they have to come back to get new wording if they were to start doing that?
If you were to... if it were to become a salvage yard, they would have to come back for specific wording on that, because this actual kind of received anything for salvage.
Well, I compliment you. The place looks nicely kept.
I would buy that too. It looks nice.
I would entertain a motion for one of you, gentlemen.
I make the motion that we approve the application.
With the provision and...
With, I guess with the provision that it could be revoked if it becomes a salvage yard or a garage, I guess.
You know, fortunately, that's a whole different licensing. It's not even a salvage, our license, from the used car commission.
Well, since you put it in there in your application, I think we could put it in there to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
And we're just making a recommendation to council to...
Correct.
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
I am that probably, and I can assure you it's not gonna be a salvage yard.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So Chairman, you have a motion to approve with the note in there, the notice revoked if a salvage yard is occupied on the site. You have a motion and a second. I'll take a vote. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will send this to City Council for approval.
Okay, so we have to wait to go to City Council Tuesday, the 19th, before we actually get our official, like, head of schedule?
Our cutoff for City Council items is Wednesday at noon, and so that happened yesterday.
Oh, I thought whenever I talked to you before, you went ahead and put us on the docket, because you said that you knew it was gonna have to go to City Council, so you scheduled that for Tuesday.
You're right, you're right. I'll make sure that it's on there and in the packet before I even leave the office tonight.
Okay, I can remember that.
That's why I said, "Oh, dude."
There you go. 5:19 agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Good to see you.
Item six, discussion of fossil action to recommend an amendment to the residential appearance standards regarding residential fence installation.
Okay, the background on this is that Commissioner Chappell approached me between now and the last meeting, saying that there were some concerns about some fences that were kind of encroaching on the right-of-way, and that he would like to see something beefed up to where we could kind of require some sort of site inspection to alert any applicant that they have to be so far back from the sidewalks or the city streets, or any easement that would run through, and they can just continue coming in closer on the sidewalks. I'll just turn it over to...
And I just... I brought, you know, I'm the picture guy. But, you know, in, you know, just a lot of my studies since becoming a planning commissioner and on city planning and having read articles about what, you know, makes cities livable. In fact, I just read an article recently on the top 25 most livable cities in the United States, and I read about every city. Oklahoma City actually made the top 25, I think, because of their unemployment, but the very first three things listed in any city was walkability. And often in Guthrie's strategic plan, and over the years, the council has discussed making Guthrie a more walkable community, and in fact, there's getting ready to be some new sidewalks built for the kids that are walking to Fogerty. We have a lot of existing residential areas that do not have sidewalks, and it's sort of piecemeal. I mean, you might go, there's one block, and there'll be three-fourths of a block will have a sidewalk, and you get to that last house, and it doesn't have a sidewalk. And what we've had happen over a period of time is that a lot of these homes or properties that do not have a sidewalk will build a fence, and they build it right over the city access.
City right-of-way.
City right-of-way. And several... and this has actually been a couple of years ago, I went around and took some pictures of this, and I will tell you that there have been a couple of fences stopped in Guthrie that were being built over the sidewalk line, because neighbors complained, and then it was brought to the planning commission, and this was before I was on it. I know that one fence was even moved back after it had been built. And so I took a couple of pictures, and Guthrie has no permitting. If anyone that wants to build a fence, there's no permit, you just do it. And we do have ordinances in place regarding height, construction materials, and just recently, and if you read the design guidelines about fences, you know, metal sheet metal's not to be used. And I just saw a home on the west side that built a white sheet metal fence all the way around their property, and it comes right off the front profile of their home. Corrugated metal, which would not apply as far as the ordinance goes, but there's no permitting. They don't apply for a permit. My recommendation, if the council would consider it, is a minimal permit, you know, $10. It wouldn't bother me if it was $5, just to find out where the fence line is, if the materials that are being used are in the design guidelines. I'll give you, gentlemen...
Well, here goes two, Joe. If you're required a permit, then you also would need an inspection...
Yes.
...to be sure it's put in there.
Yes.
Knock yourself through and let it help.
Yes. And this is just... if you look at these four pictures, and you can see this has been happening in Guthrie for over a generation, and some of these are very nice fences, but you will see this, the one on the bottom left. Now, this is a great sidewalk, and it runs three-fourths of a block, and then it runs into the playground, which doesn't make a lot of sense. The other one is in Highland Park Neighborhood Association, and that was probably built in the '30s or '40s. That fence, and it literally forces people into the street.
Right.
The one up on the top right is on Pine Street, and obviously was built 20 or 30 feet too far out in the front. And, you know, now we have an ordinance that, in the front yard, you... it is my understanding, in the front yard, you cannot build a chainlink fence, and this was probably built prior...
It's over four feet high.
Yes, and this was prior, probably, to the ordinance. But if there'd been a building permit, that fence would have been cut back about 20 feet. And then you can see this one on the bottom right. You can see where the sidewalk would have gone, and there are, over and over again, I actually have another page of, which is sort of redundant, but... and it seems like, since I've been made aware of this, I would say about once a year someone does this. Now, it's... this wouldn't impact a lot of people. A lot of fences aren't being built, but what's happening is that when they are being built, they are cutting back on Guthrie's walkability factor, or, you know, and even if you don't have a sidewalk, people should be able to walk where the sidewalk is and not be forced to the street, so...
It's a safety factor.
It's a safety issue. And so, my comment, Cody, was to get this on our agenda and see if perhaps we could recommend an amendment requiring all fences to receive a permit from the planning department and a site inspection from the building inspector.
Would you also require a footprint to show us where it was gonna go?
Correct. That would come along with the site inspection. I want to add one quick comment. The... I can take the recommendation for what the fee would be. I heard five or 10 minimal to the citizen's rate fee.
Well, and they would come up with that, and I was just wanting to say that I, you know, I don't... myself personally, for what it's worth, I don't want to make this an expensive process to people that want to build up a fence, but I do want an ordinance that sort of takes the walkability factor and the overall aesthetics of our community into effect, because a lot of times what you're finding is that a home is building a fence, a privacy fence, you know, nearly out to the street, and the house next door now no longer has a view of the street. They just have a view of the fence.
Right. So, we need to do this at a workshop, Director Collier?
Well, I...
How do we... now we... and I agree, I agree. I think whatever fee might be can certainly keep it reasonable, but you still gotta send an inspector out there as a...
You know, obviously, I hate to be too captain obvious here, but you only have three of your members here tonight. If you want the other two members to have buy-in on this, but I did hear a recommendation. I wrote it down.
Can I throw this out?
Yes, sir.
I think what we probably need to do is make this recommendation to the council as a whole, that we would like to see a requirement for a permit and whatever, and then have them review it or refer it back to us for details.
Okay.
And there are, you know, I should have been a little more organized, but there are, in the design guidelines, there's a section on fences, which is pretty detailed.
Right.
I don't know... okay, here we go. Section six of the book that they gave out to us, you know, architectural design and materials, no fence or wall, and residents located in front of a building line shall exceed four feet in height, no other fence or wall shall exceed seven. Fence or walls and heads in residence enclosed single property of five acres or more, and so... anyway, I don't know if everything that I'm talking about is in here.
Well, it would never be checked if we didn't require a permit, though.
Right, yeah.
And so, again, I have heard a recommendation to, or a...
You need a motion?
A motion to recommend an amendment to the appearance, residential appearance standards requiring all fences to receive a permit from the planning department, and along with that would come a site inspection from our building inspector Jim Hickey.
Can we create that motion to you?
I've heard you.
Second.
Okay.
Can we have a vote on that, please?
One moment. Okay, motion made to recommend an amendment to the residential appearance standards requiring all fences to receive a permit from the planning department, along with a site inspection from the building inspector. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, with that, does that get us to be able to answer number four, Commissioner?
Number seven.
Number seven. Okay, first, discussion of fossil action to recommend an amendment to the residential appearance standards regarding outbuildings and accessory structures. There's a tad of a tie in here, I think, on number six, but...
A little bit. The history on this is just, it's been kind of what we've been battling back and forth, and I promised to get it on the agenda here sometime early this spring. I got it here for the May agenda, basically just requiring all outbuildings and accessory buildings to receive a permit. You can do it the exact same, the exact same way as the fence permit you did earlier, so...
We need to... Commissioner Prince, and welcome to the board again, because we both seen you've done this for nine or so years, and he's said, "Become planning, I'm City Council for a while, we're happy to have you," but to bring you a little up-to-date on this, we have had a lot of feedback from the community about these little structures that are popping up. What do we call them? Maybe a little carport?
Outbuildings, accessory building, carports, shit, anything.
While they're supposed to be happening in the backyard or the sides or popping up in front, and some of them, some of them fit in, some of them are flat roof, they looked like they would fit in architecture.
In addition to metal building, which is also... we're getting ready to...
And that's why this has come up and, well, for more on this, I think you mentioned that you've seen a few. And again, no permit has been necessary in the past, and again, if we try and make sure that permit is necessary, we'll...
There was a permit on anything over 200 feet. But also, there was, there had been a consideration by city staff that carports were accessory buildings, which has since been revisited and adjusted.
If you look at the International Building Codes, what they describe as a building is something with four walls and in an enclosure, this kind of covers a little bit more of a broad basis. I will tell you, you'll also see some language in there that you can make a recommendation to limit. If we revisit our April meeting, Commissioner Coffin had questioned what's stopping anyone from just lining up a bunch of accessory buildings under 200 square feet, throwing a garage door on it, and using it as one building, so you can, in a motion, if you so choose, limit it to one accessory building with a appeal option for a second one if they come before the planning commission. So try to answer as much of this as possible.
What would you, Commissioner, if you were, what would you like to see set? Because I think we're all pretty much in accord on this. Well, so that we are moving cities properly protected, permit-wise, something's happening in the front yard that shouldn't be, design-wise, make sure each architecture criteria, how could we work something?
Well, I think, I think what we're looking at, and I think Cody sort of mentioned this, we... it seems like what we need to do is get the amendment to council and maybe have council send it back to us to fine-tune, just like the fence. Just like the fence. So that we can decide amongst ourselves what those... and there are, once again, there are some specific guidelines, but in some areas they're a little vague. It does talk about, oh, I've got that tagged here somewhere, but that, you know, the corrugated metal isn't allowed, but I think that may deal with the residence itself, but...
And not the primary building?
The primary building, but then, you know, we've had complaints from people in the community that there are metal buildings going up in front of the front profile of the home, not in the backyard.
Right.
And then we've had some discussion about, you know, flat roof carports don't seem to be as invasive in the neighborhood, and I brought some pictures of those, but then these newer sort of, what I refer to as sort of a garage in the box that they put up in a couple of hours, that they're putting out in front of some of the home. A lot of people have thought that those need to be in the backyard and certainly not in front. So anyway, I think we're just looking for a bit of, an opportunity to present something to council, where then they send it back to us to fine-tune the guideline.
Cody, is that something that, what we need to give council, or are they gonna say, "You give us the guidelines, we'll locate," or what? Why does it need to go from us to them and back to us, or whatever?
If we send them a recommendation to make amendment to the residential appearance standards, it doesn't necessarily have to come back. I know that that was mentioned earlier, but I think that what we can do is require the permit right away, and then fill in some detail later on through other workshops and other meetings about what we are looking for in the site inspection process, to where my building inspector...
I think the council people would be looking to us to say why we're making these recommendations.
Correct.
And otherwise, we'd almost have to go to them and educate them what we've learned about, you know, what the complaints we've heard.
I think that you can definitely treat it as a two-part series. Get the, get the permit out there to kind of be mindful of what is going on around town at first, and then go after what you want in your designs and everything like that, but I think that that can definitely be worked into at a later date.
Okay, well, as staff, perhaps you could tell us how you'd like to have us affect that, because I think the sooner the better.
Okay.
This has been going on, and we know for several months.
Right, correct.
Okay, any... you need any motions or anything about that here?
I do.
What would you like the motion to have here?
So basically, we're, if we're asking for a motion on this, we are asking council to recommend amendment to the residential appearance standards regarding outbuilding and such as such, which would require them to be brought to the planning commission?
It would require a permit from the planning department and a site inspection. One thing that we had talked about between city staff... One thing that we had talked about between city staff is, we don't want to look at worst-case scenario, but at the same time, what happens if an elderly woman wants to put a shed up real quick? We don't necessarily think that it should take roughly 75 days for her to get that up and protect her, protect her belongings. And so, I, I think I've heard a lot of trust from the planning commission towards our city staff that we have at the planning department, and it would just be understanding that our, our building inspector, Jim Hanky, would go out and enforce the ordinances and enforce the requirements of what these accessory buildings look like moving forward.
Yeah, generally those buildings require concrete foundation, do you think, in building providing?
Well, it depends on kind of storage, have your foot down there.
Okay. Some, some of them come with large timber, you know, that they slide in on your property, and then so, I put a slab under mine.
Okay, so I guess basically what our motion is, I make a motion to recommend amendment to the residential appearance standards requiring all accessory structures, such as sheds, carports, and other non-primary buildings to receive a permit from the planning department, and a site inspection from the building inspector, limiting all addresses to only one accessory structure with the opportunity to appeal to the commission for a second structure. Right? So that, that helps with the, you know, they can, they can have a 200 square foot shed without a permit.
Is that correct?
Without a permit, but if they get another one, they've got, see that? That sort of stops that loophole where somebody might have six, and I've actually seen four or five in one backyard. I don't remember where I saw that.
All of a sudden, you could have a garage on your hands and technically.
Well, you could basically have a backyard full of sheds.
You could.
Without ever getting permitted.
Right.
And it would be legal, so that would sort of close that, that loophole.
I've heard a motion, and it should mean, Commissioner. That would also mean coming to the planning department that they would need to have a footprint, so they can see where this, where it would be located.
Exactly.
So that it's definitely tied down in the right spot in the property, etc.
Exactly.
As part of the permitting. Go here a second.
I, I heard a second.
Any, was there any conversation on, any comments?
I've not, I think that that's a good one. I'm going to play it back on YouTube so that I can write down exactly what the motion is, so. But you have a question in a second. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carried.
Okay, now we can get to item four, is that right? Are you more sure on item four? Item four is discussion approval application, as I said, 2015 hyphen 2011-2923 regarding a request for a solid storage shed for the property located in 601 South Cherry Street. Do we have a report from statute?
Let me get to where we're at, I'm so sorry, I thought it was right there.
I've got a question for you before you give the report.
Okay, go ahead.
Would there be any reason for us, since we just made this motion, to table this item until we hear from council?
That's, that's interesting, because your, your recommendation to the city council has not yet been approved, and so this item would go without a site inspection from our city, our building inspector.
So we haven't had a site inspection, even though we do have.
You have a, you have a.
Drawing.
Drawing, rendering of what the anticipated development looks like. This exceeds that 200 square foot rule, weighing 18 by 21 feet, so this had to come before you, before that motion was even considered, that previous motion was even considered.
So what are you saying? We can go ahead and hear it tonight, or we should wait, or, Mr. Chap, is there anybody who should table it at this time, or?
Do I assume?
Do we have to take your mission?
Yeah. You know, you, you have the, the drawing, you, you know what these guys are looking to do. Again, your, your previous motion a few moments ago wouldn't necessarily change this because it was going to come to you before, based on the square footage.
Okay. I just didn't want to do anything wrong.
Something, something for you to mention, we also already have grandfathered in? Is that, would that be the case? Some of the, some of the situation we have on the property, you mentioned a grandfather in a little bit.
Correct, correct.
So I, go ahead, Mr. Chap, would you like to give us any, any comments you have?
Oh, no, sir, I'm just, I was instructed by the Shelby, come in and submit I'd be here for putting a storage shed up, and I really need a storage shed because all of my equipment, my trailer, my ride, and all that stuff is outside because of my existing storage shed, whoa, holy. And, you know, so I got a lot of stuff, I've got two rental properties, one in Guthrie, one in Crest, and my existing residence right here, and I got stuff I need to put in there, and I don't have enough storage area to put it. And so that's the basis of our request, so.
Any questions, commissioners?
I have a question. Mr. Buffett, is, is, are you going to have a driveway to this shed?
No.
No, how will you access it?
How will I access it?
Yeah, how are you, how are you going to access it, with your trailer and?
Well, I mean, I got a small trailer, I mean, a trailer that fits on the back of my rack, I don't know, it's not a big trailer.
Oh, okay. So you're not having a, you're not going to, you're not adding a driveway or anything like that?
No.
And then the only other concern that I had, and I went by and saw, you have a beautiful home. It's the prettiest home in the neighborhood.
Very nice.
Beautiful. In fact, if you're ever selling it, just let me know, it's really nice. The only concern I have with this is that the house, and since it's a corner house, and Ed, you're looking at that, since it's a corner house, the house is back 40 feet from the street. There are two homes behind the shed.
That's correct.
And they are also 40 feet from the street. The only concern I have is that the shed will become, and I know you've got a privacy fence, I don't know with the motion that we made on the fencing, whether your fence will be grandfathered in, I can guarantee you that, even if. My only concern is that the shed becomes the most visible structure on Grant Street, because it's going to be sticking out 15 feet further than any of the homes. There's two homes behind you on Grant, and they're 40 feet back from the street.
About 10.
And then your home is 40 foot back from the street. And is that from the street, or is that from the center of the street?
That's from the street.
From the side of the street?
Right.
My only.
Forty foot total, I think 25 initially from the end to the, to the, to the front of the property. Well, see, that's, that's the issue, is my house faces east and west, their house faces north and south.
Yes.
So I, I understand what you're saying.
My, my point is, and you know, and I know that sometimes the corner homes run into a particular problem when they're trying to put something in their backyard, because a corner home, whatever they put in their backyard can affect the other street. And my concern is that when you're driving up Grant, instead of seeing the homes, you're going to see your metal building sticking out further than anything else. I didn't know if there was any way you could move it back to the 40 foot, if that would affect your plan.
Moving back in line with the house.
With the house.
That was a concern to bear also.
You know, just so it wasn't, so it wasn't, you know, Guthrie has a lot of beautiful streets, and one of the complaints that we were getting on these new carports, you know, these V-shaped carports, is that when you look down the street, that becomes the predominant structure in the neighborhood. It's not the houses you see anymore, it's that.
Carport.
It's that metal carport. I had the same concern about this building in relationship to the, to not only your home, but the two homes behind you on Grant, and if it was moved back.
If you come and take a look, we'll see, we'll show you what we mean.
If, if it was moved.
I know what you mean, because I've been looking at.
Yeah.
Here's, here's the Grant side, and you're 40 feet, and you're showing 25 feet to the building. Now, the building, you're fencing in that retirement, and you're fencing the one front back.
And then there's another home down here, which is also at 40 feet. And almost every home on that whole street, and almost every home in Guthrie is about 40 feet back from the street, so that would be.
If you move the shed open.
That's what he wants.
I know.
If you moved it back to 40 feet, I, I would have no problem with it.
Are you agreeable to doing that?
Yeah.
And then the only other suggestion.
By the course, it's fencing, what he's talking about, just, somebody sitting on that front porch, and of course, hopefully they'll.
Hopefully they'll tear it down.
Or fix it up.
Or fix it up, like this one, I says, you have a lovely home. But you see, what we're saying is that they theoretically set 40 feet back, and of course, they see your fencing too, and that looks like a six-foot fence probably, isn't it? And, and of course, you know now, we're here, I was talking a little bit, and some of that is probably out closer to Grant, and of course, that's grandfathered in, there would probably, who knows whether a big sidewalk come through there one day or not. But if this were back this direction, is what Commissioner Chap is saying.
Right.
At the 40 feet, which is what you're showing here, then there wouldn't be anybody to be able to say, well, barely a little bit of the roof will show anyway.
But the difference is, is the ease is different from my house and their house.
The what?
The ease. You know, we're talking about the 25 feet, 40 feet, that's, that's, that's what we were discussing, but, but I understand what you're saying. I've been out there, I kind of looked at it, and I'm thinking, they're going to tear it down. I went out there and looked at it, and I, I'm in agreement to move it back, line it up with them.
With the other, with your home and their home.
But it's going to affect what I'm doing, because I, I'm, then I got 25 feet, 30 feet over here with my building out there, that's going to kind of mess me up on the way I'm setting my stuff up with me moving, but I'd have to move like 10 or 15 more feet back.
Those 15 feet back.
Back toward the, the side.
And, and my, you know, I can certainly see why you wouldn't think that house behind you would be affected, but what we do here affects all the other corner houses in Guthrie. Someone wants to build a building behind them, and their, and that metal building is sticking out 16 feet in front of the front profile of the home.
The way you've shown the president.
Yes.
They would be able to see up toward the east.
Yeah.
If I put that building, I, I mean, I went out there and looked at it.
Right. Well, you obviously, you've got a good, you or your wife have a good eye for lines and things.
And I guess maybe we might ask, these are nice buildings, I have to better go hard on myself, roof color, I'm not sure you're going to.
I hope it'd be kind of beige.
I, one of the pictures here shows it as red, I would presume it would not be red.
No, no.
You'll only be able to see a little bit of the roof anyway.
Right.
Because of your fence, the building is about 70.
I think the picture that we got, yeah, a red, a red roof.
And one of those, and.
And it's going to only have one of.
One door?
One of, garage.
One garage door.
Yeah.
Well, if you would, if you would be agreeable to moving it back to the profile of the north of your home and the other two homes behind it, I would be ready to make a motion to approve.
And again, I guess the only other question is, we have any, any response from the neighbors in that area, if everybody's okay? Well, they ought to be, because we say your home is very lovely.
Did you make the motion?
I, I make a motion to approve with the contingency that the, the footprint of the home has moved back to 15.
Footprint of the shed.
To the, to the footprint of the north side of his home and the other homes on Grant Street.
All right. I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Motion to approve with the movement to 15 feet to the north side. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for putting up with us. That was already on our, we had to slip you there to the end, because I thought it might affect it one way or the other.
I require your turn. I know a lot of it, it makes it, it's good to go.
Well, thank you very much, and again, very lovely home down there.
Thank you.
Okay, after staff comments, Mr. Prince?
I have nothing. You can plug me back, but.
Good to have you with us. Mr. Chap?
I, no, I don't think, I don't think I have anything that I haven't said.
I think we've covered just about, I think the, one, we had board comments or staff, well, I know, I said staff comments.
You did, you stiffed me, but. My feelings are not hurt. You can buy me a Coke later to apologize if you want. No, thank you very much, excited to have new faces on the board, and of course, sad to see Ed Wood not being able to join us, but I'm glad that he's in the leadership role for city council. So thank you all for your time. I loved, one, one last thing, I swear to be brief, loved Mr. Chap's comment about, we have to think about what the precedent is being set for the rest of the committee. It obviously shows that we are thinking not just for tonight, but kind of a generational approach even for the, the next meeting. So I thank you guys for your wisdom and insight on that, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your time.
That'll be yours.
No, 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 I haven't had a chance here, a couple things here.
Board comments here.
All right.
Board comments, one thing came up at our last meeting, Mr. Chairman, was that structure at the old boneyard site. It was mentioned to me yesterday, I have to be in a little meeting right straight across the street from the old boneyard building, over there, where do you?
I think the Thunder Tune is perfect, yeah. It's really tall.
It has been there for some time. Actually, Chairman, Chairman Powell brought that up at the last meeting, we were looking at there, and have we, have we asked maybe Mr. Fisher to look into that? It's sat there for quite a while, and it's not looking any better with the rain.
I can tell you that we have not asked Mr. Fisher with current enforcement to step in at this point.
We have not?
We have not.
Can we, is that something we can ask that to be done? Since we've been, we've been asked and we've been requested, it's sat there now for some time, I had a week, well, measured, I said, but it's sitting on, I guess technically, yeah, that's theaters now.
Yes.
It would be a commercial site.
That's the thing that you can even do as a citizen, isn't it?
Well, I, I think probably we've got that, we've got a couple of inquiries into it, as I say, Commissioner Powell brought it up. Where can we go from here, just to maybe get something going on?
Stop all the debate.
Okay.
Let me see if I can do something about it. Say aye.
Mr. Prince, I think that is all I have. I entertain the motion to adjourn.
So will I.
Okay.
We're going to adjourn.